I call this meeting of the Stratford Board of Education to order at 7:18 on Monday, November, I'm sorry, December 19th. Just wish I had more time before Christmas. We do have a quorum. Thank you everybody for coming tonight. And Mrs. Wiltie, will you please start us off with the invocation and pledge?
I will too. Please stand. May be seen to Almighty God to bless this meeting of the Board of Education. So guide and rule over our hearts and our minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to the advancement and welfare of the community for whom we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiltie. And just for the record, Mrs. Bedell is joining us virtually today. I have her seated next to me. So she is in attendance and I can see her. Next up, we'll have our student representative reports from Banal Tara.
My name is Tara Tian and it is a pleasure to be addressing you this evening. On December 9th, the Inspire Ed Club met to discuss the second annual cultural showcase and celebrate their hard work. The student leaders discussed what went well and what can be improved for next year. Seven Inspire Ed leaders have committed to meeting twice a week after school to participate in Yale's Inspire Ed Fellowship Training Research Study. On December 13th, Banal's Men of Color Leadership Group and Living in Color Club held a joint meeting. Over 50 students were in attendance to discuss their plans for Martin Luther King Day, Black History Month, and a holiday party that will be held on December 21st. After the planning session, the students had a lively discussion about how to ensure the two groups are communicating effectively and working together to improve Banal's overall culture and climate. The Bulldog Marching Band recently won the New England States and Connecticut State Championship, performed at four elementary schools and both middle schools this month. It will also appear as the featured marching band in the Disney Plus feature Chang Can Dunk that will be released March 10th, 2023. The band is currently pursuing plans to attend a private premiere screening of the film as well as a featured performance in Disneyland, California in 2023. Banal Stage had a very successful first show back since 2019. We had a great turnout from the community. School alumni, teachers, and staff were extremely helpful in pulling off this show. Thank you to everyone. We are also so excited to be announcing the Spring 2023 Musical later this week. Keep an eye on the Banal High School stage Instagram for updates. We are also looking into a spring trip to Broadway in April. The music department will be holding the Holiday Concert on December 20th at 7:00 PM. Concert Choir and Select Choir have been working very hard to put together a beautiful selection of music. After the concert later in the week, choir students will be caroling around the school singing holiday carols. This is a partnership with the National Honor Society to bring in donations for Sterling House. Lastly, we are looking to fundraise and order concert attire for the spring concert and for the future of Banal Choir students. This is a continued effort of Ms. Callahan to build a stronger and more traditional choral program at Banal. Our guidance counselors took 86 juniors on a field trip to tour the University of Connecticut on December 2nd. We held a FAFSA workshop on the evening of December 7th to help students fill out their FAFSA's. On December 21st, we will be having our first FAFSA Challenge Celebration where students will have the opportunity to win free T-shirts, have ice cream, and enter an Apple AirPod raffle. Counselors completed grade 10 lessons on career exploration and graduation requirements. Thirty seniors participated in the onsite admissions day. The Bulldogs and Training Program held an event on December 7th for 15 students from Second Hill Lane and 15 8th graders from Flood. Students traveled to Banal for a tour of the school and saw a preview of their winter play. Rohan Terrell Football and Summer Williams Cheerleading were highlighted as the Athletes of the Month for Banal. Two Banal football players received Class M, double M, I think, All-State Honors, Michael Trovarelli and Rohan Terrell. Math teachers are reviewing student PSAT data with individuals in their classes to help students prepare for future success on the SAT. All students in grades nine through 11 will have additional opportunity to participate and demonstrate mastery in the Spring School Day Administration of this important test. Students in Biotechnology have been collaborating in small groups and conducting research on topics such as genetic engineering, birth control, cloning human experimentation, animal experimentation, and stem cells. For each topic, they conducted a debate to communicate the pros and cons as scientists giving their expert advice in a courtroom. They crafted their main argument as a team and then challenged the opposing team's point of view. We had an industry partner join us today to observe the debate. She was quite impressed with our students' engagement and interaction during the debate. On December 1st, students from Banal High School and Stratford High School, Conversations on Race, visited our partners at Newtown High School for a day of icebreakers, boundary breaking, and immersion in their school community. Over the course of the day, students participated in campus tours, bridge-building activities, and engaged in important conversations about race, diversity, and inclusivity in their respective communities. It was a fun and meaningful day for all. Sociology classes welcomed the Stratford Police Department today for a Q and A regarding their perspectives on the criminal justice system. Thank you Lieutenant Eleanor and Erin McLaughlin. Student Government is sponsoring a Whole School Spirit Week for the days prior to our holiday vacation. Today was Zoom Day, where students and staff wore what they would wear to a Zoom meeting. This consisted of blazers, blouses, dress shirts, sweatpants, and pajamas. Student Government continues to plan several events to come, including an Elf on the Shelf Contest for the school, a possible Spring Fling Dance, a Battle of the Classes, another Blood Drive and March, and we will be the official judges for the Holiday Door Decorating Contest run during the advisory program. Lastly, Banal will be hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow evening in the BHS Library Media Center at 6:00 PM. We encourage all of our families to attend and then stick around for the winter concert at 7:00 PM. Thank you for your time and have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you, Tara. Next up from Stratford High, Tiana.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to start off by sharing some amazing news. SHS senior Karen Mastizo recently learned that she was awarded the Quest Bridge National Match Scholarship. This will allow her to attend Brown University on a full four-year scholarship. Please. Additionally, we've learned that Jedi Nekwe has been accepted to Harvard University. Stratford High School held their annual blood drive on Thursday, December 9th. SHS students and faculty donated a total of 29 pints of blood. Stratford High School faculty and students have been showing off their artistic ability with the return of our Holiday Door Decorating Contest. Departments and teachers worked together with our talented students to create an amazing display of holiday spirit. Continuing with the holiday spirit, SHS Black Student Union, under the direction of Ms. McNeil and Mr. Pedion, held a toy drive for Child's Life at Yale's Children's Hospital. Over 75 toys were donated to provide children with a variety of play experiences during their hospital stay. On December 1st, 34 students from Stratford and Banal High Schools met at Newtown High School to gather with the conversation on race classes at our partner's school. Students engaged in bridge-building activities to foster relationships with the urban suburban partnership, and they completed a diversity wheel to emphasize that while our core identities may be similar, we contribute unique strengths to our communities. On December 1st, 2022, students from Ms. Scaletti's Personal Finance One classes participated in the Fintron U Stock Market Challenge Competition at the University of Bridgeport in partnership with Junior Achievement. Stratford High School has had six teams competing against 300 students from nine districts. Stratford High School's team included Kreis D., Carter Fetchen, Travis Simon, and Akira Sinclair. They earned second place in the competition and happily split their $750 prize. The Stratford High School Counseling Department and 50 seniors traveled to UConn on Tuesday, December 6th for an in-depth college tour. Students were able to meet current college students and professors as they toured Connecticut's flagship public university. On December 8th, SHS School Counselor and Football Coach Mr. Tyler organized a presentation titled Mental Health in Sports. SHS had 105 students in attendance, as well as their parents and coaches. Melvin Wells, a college football player who currently works at Yale University, was a keynote speaker alongside Curtis Eller and James Lofton, SHS alumni and members of the Stratford Police Department. The event was defined as "huge success for all." Thank you to Mr. Tyler for setting this up. On Monday, December 12th, we learned that both medical labs at Stratford and Banal High Schools were officially certified for all exams in our medical career pathways. On the same day, SHS administered the ASVAB test, the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, helps reveal careers for prospective enlisted soldiers. SHS had 12 students take this test this year. December 13th and 14th were the days that our band, jazz band, choir, select choir, and orchestra performed for their winter concerts. The talents of our students were on full display as they wowed the crowd with their talents. Congratulations to you all for a job well done. On December 14th, the Red Devil Summit, aka Advisory, also known as Advisory, students and faculty members were asked to create holiday cards for pediatric cancer patients at the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. As one of Stratford High School's teachers stated, "This was one of the most meaningful activities I've had the pleasure to facilitate and participate in during Advisory. Our kids loved it. Almost 2,000 cards were created." Thursday, December 15th marked our first-ever pre-nursing boot camp. This all-day event exposed our pre-nursing students to the skills necessary for successful completion of the CNA exam. It was informative and hands-on. Students used their real knowledge in a real-world setting in preparation for future careers. Also on 15th, SHS held their CT Community College Acceptance Day, where 32 seniors were accepted in person. Other news from our Student Services Department, Mrs. Steglis and Ms. Cobbza have conducted a trauma group. This group was extremely well-received, and students gained a better understanding about their thoughts, feelings, and behaviors as a result of trauma. In the first two months of the Thoughts Challenge, SHS is happy to report that 32% of seniors have already completed the process. In our Journalism classes, students have partnered with editor Barbara Hemlich from the Stratford Creer to produce submissions of the Stratford Community. The Stratford Creer has published several submissions thus far, including movie reviews, sports op-eds, and Gen Z perspectives on Supreme Court decisions. Students are currently researching leads, testimonials, and statistics to decide trends that will inform op-ed articles on the CT Post-Mall Teen Supervision Policy, a relevant local and teen-related issue. In athletic news, we are happy to announce that our newly-formed Stratford High Unified Sports Team is off to a terrific start this year. They traveled to two big soccer game events in the fall where our athletes excelled. The team is a very high-level team with a lot of talent. It is composed of seven SHS athletes who are looking to grow the program into a quality unified sports program. Along with the athletes, there are currently over 20 student partners that work with them. The team traveled to Kogan Chog Regional High School on Monday, December 12th. Region 13 has an extensive unified program that not only provides sports for their athletes and student helpers, but also incorporates activities in culinary art and music. Stratford High athletes and partners spent the day building friendships and working together on various projects. It was a great opportunity to build relationships outside of our Stratford community. We are also happy to announce that Stratford High School had 68 Fall Varsity athletes recognized for being true student athletes. These 68 students were awarded the SWC All-American Team Certificate. On January 19th, our Link Crew will host a Coco and Crayon event. Our Link Crew student advisors will work with the freshmen in the cafeteria to help them prepare for their midterm experiences or exams. The Stratford High Music Department has announced the Spring Musical, Once Upon a Mattress. Students will audition for the roles from December 19th to the 22nd. The video production classes have been creating morning announcements to showcase the events at SHS each and every morning. My new favorite segment would have to be the Christmas Countdown. We appreciate all the hard work. The Stratford High Honor Societies have been hard at work this holiday season. The National Honor Society has participated in the Sterling House Great Rake and Christmas Tree Sale. The Science Honor Society has volunteered their time with Sterling House students doing science experiments. Thank you all for the opportunity to inform you on the amazing events occurring at Stratford High, and I hope you have an amazing holiday break.
Thank you, Tiana. And ladies, enjoy your holiday break. I hope you guys get a chance to relax and have a wonderful sleep-in. Moving on, we do not have any presentations this evening, so we'll move on to our public forum session. I believe we do have one public speaker, Mr. Fiorello. Just please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Fiorello, 20 Red Fox Road. I'm speaking tonight at the urging of many teachers and students at Stratford High School. I'm fairly certain that representatives of the school district, the board, and the town are well aware that this building, in both its King Street and North Parade structures, has had repeated issues with air quality and air temperature. Our district's newest, most state-of-the-art showplace is in trouble. Last year, we closed school in June with some of us sweating in high '70s, low '80s temperatures, completely unresponsive to thermostats, while our colleagues across the bridge were wearing sweaters and jackets indoors. When we returned in the fall, we experienced the same thing. We were hopeful that something might have been done over the summer, but it was not fixed. I attended meetings and learned that compressors were failing and would continue to fail unless a lengthy and expensive repair and reinstallation was completed. I was assured that this was not a design flaw, but a subcontractor's installation practice that went against industry standards and looked, upon inspection, as if it had been twisted back on itself like a roller coaster. I learned this in September. I have not learned when and how the fix would take place, and I think it's because I was asking when and how, rather than who. The schools looked to the town, which is, of course, in charge of school buildings. The town looked at the contractor, the contractor looked at the subcontractors, but the problem has not been fixed. I am told it's tied up in litigation. We do not know how to dress for the day at Stratford High. Students pass from uncomfortably warm to uncomfortably cold rooms several times a day. Teachers play roulette when we open the door. We don't know what to expect. We layer ourselves. And this has been ongoing. I know, I see several people in the room who know about the problem, and I've heard excuses, but I have not heard solutions. And this, I'm personally affected, but this was brought to me by several teachers who said, "What's going to happen about it? When is this going to be fixed? It's been months." We ended last school year talking about this, and it's still a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our Administrative/Executive Reports. I will pass it off to Dr. Sunday.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I will begin this executive report by extending a happy holiday season to our stakeholders who are here today and stakeholders who are at home. This is a shortened month, but we would like for everybody to be safe, healthy, and enjoy the holiday seasons. I would like to extend appreciation to the Board of Education across our campuses and across our schools. Each school has been engaged in several different activities in celebration of the season. I know last week, a few of us were at Lordship for the Door Decorating Contest, and one of the things I walked away from that visit with is hanging with my gnomies, right? Was that what it was? Hanging with the gnomies. Our kids are ultra-talented, and they were able to talk to board members about their design and what that experience was like for them. Next, I would like to take a moment and recognize Ms. Arlette Johnson, who is the Assistant Principal at Franklin Elementary School. We speak often about the talent that we have here at the Stratford Public Schools. It is my pleasure and honor to share with the Stratford community that Ms. Arlette Johnson has been recognized by the Connecticut Association of Schools as the Assistant Principal of the Year. At the appropriate time, we will recognize her at the board meeting in the future. I have been entirely proud to hear the message about those two individuals at Stratford High. Karen, I had a chance to spend some time with last year. She served on the Superintendent Advisory Committee, so I had a chance to know her in some ways. And Jedi, I've heard things about her and super impressed. In our senior classes here, we have roughly about 520 seniors who will be crossing the stage either at Stratford High or Banal next spring. And our aim is to make sure that each one of them have a post-secondary plan, whether it is college, highly competitive college, whether it's community college, whether it's trade school. So I know our schools will continue to work in that direction to ensure that our students have a plan. These two students just happened to have Christmas come early, and they have some excellent options. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we are extremely proud of all of you. Keep up the good work. Keep representing Stratford in all the appropriate ways. Next, I do want to speak about some transitions that will be coming here for us in the next couple of months. I received, sat down, and had a conversation with Principal Florrick, Principal Eli Whitney. You all know Principal Florrick, a highly-respected educator, 12 years in administrative role, maybe a little bit more, but a longtime educator in the district. She shared with me that she would elect to retire at this time. I also received the information that she had a grandson that was delivered on Friday. So we are extremely happy for her, but please, join me in congratulating Principal Florrick on a well-deserved retirement, her impact in all of our classrooms across the district, and certainly her impact at the Eli Whitney Elementary School is immeasurable, so we wish her well in retirement. Next, also received the notification, an individual I have a high level of respect for, an individual who is outside in the field of education in Connecticut is definitely high. Brian Tuskright, Assistant Principal at Flood, will be moving on to an Assistant Principal position at Berlin High School. Good friends with the principal there, and she is receiving just a stellar educator who will be joining them at Berlin. Brian has made an impact at Flood. For those of you who've had a chance to have children go through Flood Middle School, is just somebody with a sharp understanding of instructional work, a sharp understanding of cultural, school culture dynamics, and we wish him well, and perhaps someday down the road, our paths may cross again. So naturally, I am in a position as the superintendent to figure out the best ways to fill those vacancies. I am having conversations with leadership at both of those sites. I will sit down with HR Director Ms. Courtney Brown, and over the next few days, before the week is out, we'll make an announcement on how we're going to respond to those vacancies. But nonetheless, both schools are in excellent shape to continue to work moving forward. And last, it's important, as we go into the holiday break, this time last year, we were tracking numbers, and numbers look different. And as I travel across the schools over the last week or so, and I hear people sneeze and cough, I have to make the shameless plug, this PSA, that people should be cautious. We are tracking numbers. Over the most recent weeks, we've been hit more so with the flu than COVID and RSV, but over the last 24 to 48 hours, we're seeing a little bit more of the COVID cases. So I'll remind our families, certainly enjoy your time together over the holiday break, but to the extent that you can, make sure you are safe, okay? Exercise all the recommended mitigation strategies that we've employed over the last three or four years, and we wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday break. And that's it for the Superintendent/Executive Report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Dr. Sunday? Mr. Henry?
So this is, I think, the second year we've had Vice Principal of the state?
Not in a row.
Okay.
But yes, we've had them in the past.
Okay. I think, what, was it Rob?
That was the Connecticut.
That was PTA.
PTA, okay, okay, great. Hopefully, we can find some room. I mean, we have some, we have some great people here, and hopefully, we can find some room to keep them here in town if they ever decide to move up the ranks and keep Stratford home.
That's the plan. And again, you know, my position is we have great stability and great options at each of those sites, and over the next couple of days, I'll be sitting down with all of the appropriate individuals with the intention of releasing our next steps to our community before Friday.
Any other questions for Dr. Sunday? Ms. Bedell? You're good? Anybody down here? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sunday. We'll move on to our report from Ms. Mangini.
Yes, good evening. Just a few things to share with you this evening. The Finance Committee met before this meeting, and you did receive your financial report for November, and I did share that the year seems to be tracking on budget. However, it is early in the year. There's a lot of variables, and we definitely have to make it through the winter months. So stay tuned, but we'll certainly keep you up to date on that information. And needless to say, we've been completely immersed with working on fiscal year '24's budget. We're reviewing all school and department requests, and we are planning to have the Superintendent's proposed itemized estimate of expenditures for fiscal year '24 presented to the board on February 6th. And lastly, I'm just going to mention once again that the Smart Funds are going to expire on Friday, and as of January 3rd, when we return from the holiday break, families will be expected to begin to pay for meals again. So again, we are urging families to apply for free and reduced meal applications, and there are applications on the website to do it electronically, and/or you can get an application at your school. And that's my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Mangini? Ms. Cubey?
Maybe just remind everyone that only certain schools, right? Again, that way they're not thanking all schools. So if you attend, I believe it's Stratford Academy, Nichols, Franklin, Lordship, and Second Hill Lane, then you will continue to get free breakfast and lunch, but the other schools, and if you fill out the form to check your eligibility. So I just wanted to make sure we clarify that for people who weren't watching the earlier meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Cubey. That was a very important point. Thank you.
Ms. Bedell?
Just to quickly clarify, the schools that will no longer be funded for breakfast and lunch, they've been given instructions on how to fund their accounts, and it's so that they're properly funded when they return from the school year, and there's no blips on the third?
As much as, I mean, I know I can speak having a child, and one of those schools, it's been posted on Dojo, the school-wide Dojo, and I think it's in the newsletter as well. So only speaking personally, I can say that the communication has gone out. It's a matter always, I guess, of who's going to read the communication, et cetera.
Of course. I just wanted to make sure that information's being put out there as well, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else for Ms. Mangini today? Okay. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to our Teaching and Learning Report from Dr. Veda.
Good evening, everyone. Mike, can we? I think it's on.
Oh. It's on. Maybe.
I think it's on. Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays to everyone. I just have two brief announcements. The first is just our annual kindergarten information session will be held on January 25. It is a Wednesday evening, and we welcome all families who have an incoming kindergarten student to attend. We'll have present there a principal, a teacher, a kindergarten teacher. Just to talk a little bit about the day itself for kindergarten students, maybe ways that we can connect with families. We also will have their information about the dual language program for incoming kindergarten students. And the registration process over the last few years has changed slightly. There's more of a, an online component to that. And so part of the kindergarten registration also includes an online component, so we'll talk a little bit about that as well. There'll be an opportunity for question and answers as well. So it will be held in person for the first time in a couple of years at Soto in the gymnasium, and we'll have some other partners, community partners, who will join us there as well. So it'll be approximately, I think it's 7 o'clock in the evening. Please watch for information that will be sent out. So we look forward to seeing families who have a kindergarten student who will be joining us in the fall. Okay? And the other thing that I wanted to mention, this is the time of the year, I think, that's very appropriate. We see wonderful examples of our students' work in the fine arts area. And Dr. Boyle, who is the coordinator for fine arts and her department and her secretary, helped to put together a newsletter that highlights some of the activities across the district that has been, have been taking place. It was just so interesting to me that I thought I really wanted to share it with the Board this evening. It is also up on the website for families to see. So if you go to the Stratford Public Schools website and scroll down to the bottom of the page where the newsletters are, you'll see this particular, this particular newsletter. I think the thing that struck me was, and I, and actually, Dr. Boyle sort of explained this to me, at the top of the page, you'll see piano keys, and they're painted. And she, she thought, you know, she explained to me that was sort of a marriage, if you will, between the arts and music. So I really thought that was very clever. And then on the last page is actually the performance calendar. So if you wish to catch one of the performances at one of our schools, and there are some that are running into January, please look at the last page. But there's a great deal in between the front page and the last page. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's neat. What a fun thing. Any questions for Dr. Gata tonight?
I know you mentioned the kindergarten information session and things like that. Just made me think of kindergarten screening. Are we going to be screening kindergartners so that our classes are, because I know kindergarten is a little of the duck, you never know, the makeup. So I didn't know if we were going to be doing some screening.
So generally, what happens is each of the elementary schools, and over time, more and more have joined this practice, in the spring, the elementary schools invite families in with their child, they're entering kindergarten student. Families usually meet with the principal and the media center, and there's a little stations that are set up in the, in the gymnasium. So principals send that information out to incoming families for that, for that process. The other thing is the preschools that are in town have joined with us and offered to help provide information for their students who will be coming to our elementary schools. There's a form that can be filled out that parents sign off on, saying that teachers can provide that information. Those come to my office, and then once children are placed, we send those to the elementary schools that they're with, so that the incoming teacher has more information on them.
But then we're not doing a universal common assessment screening?
The, the, the common, the screenings are done at the beginning of the school year.
When the class is already
Yes.
constructed, rather than before to know the makeup?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Rather than like before they enter kindergarten, like
Right, well, it depends.
I know some districts do universal screening, administer universal screening to incoming kindergarters before, you know, they step into kindergarten, so you have an idea to help balance classes?
So those are, those are the kinds of activities that happen at the, at the buildings themselves in the spring, prior to the fall, the entrance in the fall. That information is collected at that time. So there'll be a reading specialist there, a math, a math coach or teacher, sometimes a physical education teacher.
So then all the schools are giving a universal screener?
Yes.
Not just some?
Since, over time, yes. All of them have now participated in that. It's been difficult over the last couple of years because of COVID, but it will start up again this spring.
Okay.
I think, you know, just listening to you speak, Ms. Carol Fabian, I think I understand the objective of what you're trying to accomplish, which is efficient and effective placement, appropriate placement, once the kids come in. So I think what you're putting on the table, we're picking up, and we'll take that back. We'll have conversations, and if there's a universal way to implement this, we'll do so. But I don't know, I can't say that that's a process we have in place right now.
Okay. That's, that's, that's what I was looking for clarity on.
Right.
I didn't think so, and I just wanted to, right, to your point, put that out there, that is something that I think would be helpful.
Right, for efficiency. I think there's a process in place right now where we have information, as Dr. Gata mentioned, we receive from people. But I think what I, what I understand you, as you speak about this, is a better, more efficient placement, so kids are in their appropriate placement
Correct.
upon entry point.
Yes.
Rather than after. We'll work on that.
So may I also add, though, during the information process, after parents register, if a child may need to have the home, the home language survey, that is done ahead of time as well?
No, I understand that, but to Dr. Sunday's point, I'm focused more on like the universal screeners that, like, we're giving, right?
Yep.
You're saying at the beginning of the year. I'm asking, can some of these things be done to assess the students before they enter our doors?
Right.
Ms. Bedell?
I missed a little bit of the response there. Are we saying we do have a universal screener system that we use? We do not?
We don't do it in a systemic way, at least in the way it's suggested by Ms. Carol Fabian. She put a suggestion on the table that we're going to take back to cabinet and discuss a little bit more. Right now, we have a process where we receive information from providers, and then we use those to place students. What Ms. Carol Fabian is suggesting is that we have a process in place where we can screen kids prior to the entry point into our kindergarten classroom, so they're appropriately placed, rather than doing it retroactively.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we don't have a specific universal screening system put in place. We just kind of do it individually by school.
Correct. At this time, that's what it is. But we are committed to investigating the suggestion deeper and more broadly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for Dr. Gata?
I do have a
Yes, ma'am.
slightly related question. So I know you're talking about kindergarten, but I'm curious what our process is for children who are transitioning to different schools, right? But they are, are students with exceptionalities. So there was a situation at the beginning of the school year where someone transitioned from elementary into middle school, but it's my understanding, they don't get like a tour of the building and familiar, you know, familiarized with the building. So when they're in that environment, they're out of, you know, their element, and a lot of things ended up happening, at least in this one situation. So I would love to understand what our process is for making them a little more acclimated before jumping in. And if we don't have that process right now, can we, you know, before the new school year, develop something?
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gata. We will move on to our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 28, 2022, and also our personnel document for this month.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Henrich, second by Ms. Bedell. Any discussion?
I was actually going to ask if we can keep them separately, because I had questions regarding personnel.
Um, yeah. So I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 28.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy, second by, second, second by Ms. Carol Fabian. Discussion on the meeting minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 7-0. I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel document for this month.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy, second by Mr. Henrich. Any discussion?
Pam, I'm hoping you might be the person that can help answer two questions I have regarding the personnel. I know Courtney's here, and she can help too. Do we have a practice in place allowing one coach, one person to coach two sports in the same season? Because I noticed in our personnel document, we have one person receiving stipend for two different sports same season.
I would probably defer to Courtney, but I'm not sure I'm understanding your question. I know we do sometimes have stipends that are split if there's two people.
No, it's two different sports same season, but same coach. I just wanted to make sure that that was an oversight, that was something that maybe was extenuating circumstances. I just, I've never seen it before. Okay. Thank you. And I can send you an email to follow up. And the second, Courtney helped me a little bit with, we have a lot of really great after-school programs happening, and a lot of teachers being placed in those programs. I just want the discrepancy in the funding. They are grant-funded, which is great. I just want to make sure we're using our dollars most effectively as we're receiving them. So what was the criteria set forth for these new hires, these new positions, these new opportunities?
I will give you specifics after the meeting. I will send them out. But what we did was give each school an allocation, and we had hoped to have a full year of each of these after-school enrichment programs. So we set the stipend accordingly, hoping that they would meet twice a week. But what we found were that some of the teachers had some great ideas, but they would prefer to do them quarterly or maybe a shorter period of time. So Dr. Clemmie and myself really looked at what was being suggested as these activities. We discussed them with both Dr. Sunday and Dr. Gata, and when we felt they were value-added, we would prorate them accordingly.
Okay.
And we did have a couple, to my earlier point, a couple of teachers that wanted to do it together, so they split the stipend. But we were very consistent, and we were very careful to be fair throughout all of this. And we do have a spreadsheet we can certainly share with you.
Okay, thank you. And they'll be evaluated as effective, whether or not they carry on?
I, you mean
You know, enrollment of the students actually going, the actual program and the progression of it?
Yes. That's part of the requirement from the grant anyway, so we will be looking at that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. That's all I had to.
Super. Any other questions regarding the personnel document? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to items for action and discussion. Number one, there are no budget transfers. Number two, I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Stratford Board of Education and the Stratford Administrators Association.
So moved.
So, so moved by Ms. Cupy, second by Ms. Bedell. Any discussion? We have Mr. Dugis here, if anybody has any questions.
I know that, I think we had received some highlights from our attorney, Mr. Dugis. Would it make sense to have him give us a quick rundown on it, or are we okay with just leaving it as it sits with just a written?
I'm, I'm a little biased, since I sat through the negotiations, but if, if, if you guys would like a summary, I'm happy to.
I actually was going to suggest that, since most of us were not a part of those conversations
Yeah, you bet.
and we did get the written piece, it would be nice to hear it.
You bet.
I don't know if that's the only reason why you're here, but if it is the reason, we might as well make use of your
Come on up.
Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward on the economics, which is usually what folks focus on. It was, it's a three-year agreement. It begins next June, so we're always negotiating certified contracts ahead of time, 2.5% a year. The administrator settlements this year, like so many other things, had an upward trend. The settlement, last time I checked, was 2.5% and rising, right about the time we settled, the numbers were coming in around 2.5, and that's why we ended up where we did. Administrator salaries, I wouldn't say they're high, and I wouldn't say they're low. You know, at the starting end, it's a little on the low side, but at the high end, it's, it's competitive. So to land at the average, I think, was totally appropriate. Health insurance, they are already paying 21.5%, which was a full percent, if not a little bit more than the average of other administrators. So that's why we held it at the 21.5. And we also got a couple of other admittedly fairly small cost-saving moves, but by increasing the out-of-pocket maximum, by increasing the amount they contribute towards dental, we were able to reap a little bit of savings in that area. And then, you know, there's a lot of language changes, some operational, some significant, some really just clarification. And happy to answer any questions about that. But that's really the broad strokes of the settlement.
Any questions?
So with the contract, once it's approved, is it a public document? Or I'm guessing some of the negotiations were done in executive session. Is, once it becomes ratified, does it then become a public document?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions regarding the contract? Okay, thank you so much for your
My pleasure.
clarification. And seeing no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three. I will entertain a motion to approve the trip for the Benel High School and Stratford High School band students to travel to Los Angeles, California in regards to the Disney movie project.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion regarding the trip?
Can I go?
I know.
Can I go?
Sounds spectacular.
No discussion, but you know, it's an excellent opportunity for our students in Stratford Benel. You know, Disney coming into town last year was a Hallmark and Signature event for us, and zero concerns about the team or the group making the trip across the country. I'm convinced that based on how many times that Jim Miller has been in California, I'm convinced he pays taxes in California. So they have our full endorsement, and we're excited for this, this opportunity.
Great. Yes, sir.
And I think I saw they're just missing one school day. Did I read that correctly? Yeah, okay.
16th, 20th.
It's a brief trip.
Much better than the football teams do.
Come on, Mike.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Bedell, sorry. I'm neglecting you.
Do you want me to?
Seeing no further discussion, I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Henrich?
It's Walt Disney.
Mr. Henrich?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
Voting on voting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 7-0. Have fun. Our next item, number four, is for discussion purposes only. We will, I will open up the floor for discussion about the school plan planning exploratory questionnaire. Anybody?
So moved?
I don't know. I think we, I think, I can just open it up.
Oh, we don't need to.
Go crazy. Any discussion regarding this? Ms. Cupy?
So, okay, within the Plan and Planning Committee, one of the items that we've been working on is sort of getting feedback from the elementary and middle school community on whether or not the sixth grade, if it makes sense for them to move into the middle school environment versus remaining in the elementary school environment. And where this stems from is some, like, 30 years, right? Like, there have been a couple of studies done through that committee. Like there have been a couple of studies done through that committee, you know, with some options, right? And so us being a new, newly formed committee, we looked at some of the findings there. And so we've been having discussions among ourselves. And one of the things that came from it was to survey slash put out a questionnaire to the staff in those schools to get kind of feedback on whether this should be something we act on in the future, or maybe it just gets settled, right? Depending on the input that we're getting from them. Additionally, you know, we discussed, at some point, we need to look at our lines to our schools, right? So we have two high schools, two middle schools, but nine elementary schools. And that's a lot. And so we've talked earlier in the meeting about some schools, their capacity, et cetera. And, you know, we do need to figure out a way to ease the pressure off some of our schools. So we need to explore that and do it in a professional way. So with that in mind, getting a sense of whether sixth grade should be in the middle school, we kind of want to make sure we're getting all the feedback and input before any decision is made, right? And I do feel like this questionnaire or survey may make sense to be part of that professional kind of study that we would do for the realignment. So while we started it here in the subcommittee, I am thinking, at least, you know, in my mind, that it would make sense to make it a part of a scope of whatever firm we, you know, engage to do the study about the lines.
Right, you bet. Like sort of an extension. I know that Mr. Fajella previously on our board had been working on a demographic study, and so something similar to that, and then including this exploratory information about our middle schools.
And that demographic study was done kind of in COVID. So we do need to kind of, I don't know that the data is out, if it's, you know, old or too old, but we do need to look at more current data and the trends that we're seeing in our school systems.
Yeah, you bet.
School system right now.
You bet. Okay, well, thank you for that recap, Ms. Cupy. Pardon me?
I just had a comment too.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah, so one of the things we had looked at on the, and just so everybody knows, this is, the committee, the plan and planning committee wanted to put this out. We felt that the people who had probably the best insight were those who work with the kids every day. So the reason why we did it the way we did was to get their input. That was step one. Whether we can do it, that's step two. Whether we want to do it and financially able, that's step three. But we felt there were a couple of steps. A, engaging, engaging the staff, all members who were from K through eight, getting their input into whether they thought it was a valuable move. And Stratford is one of the few communities in, I think in the state of Connecticut, that still holds on to the K through six model. So we wanted to look at that. Nothing's set in stone, but we're just trying to find out. When we looked at, at processes that had taken place in the past, every process ended with them focusing on the problems, not the solutions. What we're trying to do is look at the solutions. But step one was A, to find out what the staff felt about it, and if that went into a positive direction. Step two would be to engage the community. And if that went ahead, then we would look into the further steps of whether we wanted to do it financially and we had the physical capabilities of doing it within our current plan. So some of the studies showed that it was possible to be done. We wanted to do it. But again, our first goal was to include those who, who had probably the biggest input and to see what their reaction would be. But it's not something we are doing. We are exploring the opportunity of whether or not we want to move on to those steps.
My question was and remains, what problem are we trying to solve? I've not heard, I've not heard anything coming out of our schools that were doing our children a disservice by having them in elementary school through sixth grade. In fact, the one actual published study that I could find on the, on the topic by Duke University, it was published, I think, through, through some Duke scholars in 2007, stated rather definitively that it was better to leave children, if possible, in elementary school through sixth grade for behavioral issues and such. So I'm just curious then, what problem are we trying to solve when we do most definitely have a pretty clear issue with classroom size, the equity of those classrooms, and to Ms. Cupy's point, you know, perhaps need to start exploring more seriously the redrawing of our boundary lines in order to rectify that?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I did bring up the Duke study in our committee. That's, you know, when this topic came up, I did some research and I tried to find research on both sides, right? Like what are the positives and negatives? And for me, at least, one thing I was pushing for as we're doing this questionnaire is making sure that any such move is taking into account the impact on our children academically, right? So we're doing a lot for social, emotional, et cetera, et cetera. But what I want to understand is if something like this would benefit them academically. Because we know we have a gap that, you know, the team, Dr. Sunday, and everybody is trying to work on improving. And we don't want to make moves that are going to counter or interfere with those efforts. So I think hearing from at least, you know, teachers and educators who have, you know, spent so many years studying children and, you know, working with children, their feedback on whether this would help them, I want to hear that. I don't necessarily think that this is the utmost important action or thing that we need to work on. I do think redrawing our lines, we need to focus on that. Now, that's a very, very sensitive matter because it's not simply trying to fit our students into the nine elementary schools. There's a, there's a lot of sensitivity and, you know, socioeconomic balancing have to be played into all of this. So I don't want it to be, you know, something that we on ourselves just do and, you know, put into place like it was done when everything got dismantled. I want it to be done professionally. I want experts involved and give us the different plans that we can then kind of say whether or not we support something.
You bet. Thank you.
That's where I stand.
Madam Chair, so
Yes, sir.
So you had asked a question, what problem are we trying to solve? And I don't necessarily look at it as a problem. I look at it as, as can we provide a better educational model for our students? And if, I don't know the answer to the question, but if we move sixth grade up, will that provide a better educational model? Is it better for the social, emotional process? Is it better for the educational process? Is it? And there were a bunch of questions we came up. Is it better for, for those kids to move in and get prepped for, for the future steps into the high school? We don't know the answers to that, but we ask the questions and that's why we started with the soldiers in the trenches, so to speak, those who work with the kids every day. And there are studies, and I'm sure for every study you can find, you can, you know, find another study, and if you take somebody enough, they'll give you the answers a lot. But we thought that the best place was with our, with our teachers and our staff members who work with those kids every day. And they might come back and say, and the other piece of it was that, again, Stratford is one of the few districts in the state of Connecticut who stuck to the K through six model. But we wanted to ask them, and it might come back that they say, no, it's not, it's not a valid, it's not a valid move. It's not worth the effort. It's not worth the trouble. And then, and then we drop it there. But we also wanted to do it in line with the possibility and the probability that sooner more than later, we're going to have to redraw some of those lines. So if we're going to do it, we wanted to do it all as one, make one, one step. But, but it's just eliminating the processes. Do we want to go with this? Do we not want to go with that? But so that, that was our thinking along the lines. So if we did have to redraw some of those lines, we could do it as a unified effort, not, you know, put the kids and the parents through distress, one year of redrawing the lines and the next year. And again, it might turn out that this is not a, it's not a worthy endeavor, endeavor, and then, and then we put it away. But again, all the past efforts focused on the problems, not the solutions. And I think we've tried to focus on is getting the answer, is this better for the kids? Not what problems do we have to overcome?
You bet. Is there a way, as I think suggested by Ms. Cupy, to wrap this inquiry into some sort of organization that we're hiring to do the study for us, to wrap that exploratory information into that, as opposed to having it separate?
We just wanted to start with a very simple, very brief survey to our staff to find out their input. And then if we wanted to go to the next step, if it came back in a positive manner, and then we would have brought it here to this committee and engaged the community, and then maybe at that point engaged a more deeper study that required some, an expense from, from the board. But we didn't want to go through that process unless we started asking the first, the most basic questions. Do we want to do this? And then step two would be, how do we do this? So, but right now, we're just, we as, we as a, as a subcommittee, just wanted to get the answer, ask those who work with the kids, do you think this is a worthy endeavor? And that was our first step.
Sure.
So I do think regardless of, sorry if somebody else was going to speak, it, you know, we do need to get a study done about our lines, right? And so it may make most, the most sense to put this as part of it. And that way, it's a more cohesive effort. And when you're dealing with a sensitive community already, right, where we've already gone through, you know, chaos, right? And so that can leave, you know, people feeling uncomfortable about something like this. And, you know, it's not shying away from this effort, but just putting it in the hands of the experts, I think, might make the most sense.
But again, to follow up again, yes, that is correct. We should, I agree with it 100% that if we get to that point, then we put the whole process in the hands of the experts and they show us the options we have. But, but until we resolve the question, yes, there is no doubt that we have to redraw the lines at some point soon. All right? But whether or not we want to include the move to the sixth grade, but again, it was a starting point where we wanted to ask the staff what their, what their perception was. And again, if we got negative responses to that, then we don't need to include that into our, into a survey or into a study that we hire somebody to do. The first step was to find out, is this, is this something? And even we might get the study back from a professional organization and say, you know what? This isn't worth it. We, we don't have the ability to do this. And we might get a reaction back from the town and realize we aren't going to do it. But the very first and most basic question is, is this going to provide a better educational model to the students? And if that comes back as a yes, then we probably want to move ahead with it. But if it comes back as a no, then we don't. But until we get that answer, it, it would not really be a wise use of our resources to hire somebody to give us those answers when we have that, that, that knowledge base right here. It's, it's a, it's a questionnaire we can send out, we can get answered in a week, and we can at least have some basic knowledge as to where we want to go. And that, and that was based on the unanimous
I hear you. But I think what's being said is that if we're going to, this, this work, this work exploring our demographics and, and the boundary work does need to be done. That's kind of inarguable at this point. And so if something like that, if we are going to be investing in something like that, it's not, I don't believe, I could be wrong, but one would assume it will not cost extra money to involve, you know, a few extra questions.
Right, and they might actually be able to enlighten us on certain considerations that we need to, right? Like think about as part of that. So I feel like maybe that should be the, you know, the path that we take.
And then perhaps, you know, when that information comes back, then take it to our school stakeholders and say, is this something that you want to see happen? Is this something that you find, would find beneficial? Once we, you know, maybe sort of know the nuts and the bolts of that, I would say personally.
I mean, again, as a committee, we voted unanimously to take this first basic step to get the most simplest answer as to whether our community feels that to move forward. If we hire somebody to do the research, it's going to cost us tens and, tens and tens of thousands of dollars for them to put the answers together, which would be a waste of money if we don't know we want to move ahead.
But it's not just research, it's not, it wouldn't just be research on this one thing. It's research on the larger issue of how can we put our children in school buildings in a, in a fair and equitable way?
Let's, let's first find out if we want to move the sixth grade over to there instead of hiring somebody and paying a pension. It's a basic questionnaire and it's really not complicated. And we wanted it to be really simple. And again, it was unanimous vote, vote by all the members. And during the questionnaire, I also included Ms. Fabian and Ms. Bedell in formulating the questions. They've gotten a little more long-winded because they've been edited, but it was very short and very simple, and it would have been turned around in a week's time. But now we're talking months and months, and we're talking about this whole wait for me, I'm the leader.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I, if I may?
Yes.
So, Mr. Henrick's
So before I get interrupted, Ms.
Yes.
Cupy, can you let me finish my, my line of thinking and then I will yield the floor to you?
Sure.
But just for, for, you know, decorum, stop interrupting.
But you're going on and on and on.
Go right ahead, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay, and may I interrupt? Whatever happens in a committee is committee work. It then needs to come, if it's something that is going out district-wide, it does need to come before, come before the board, come before the superintendent. And so I think that's what we're doing here. We're having this discussion at a board level. I appreciate all the work that's been done at the committee level. Do you mind? Ms. Bedell's been waiting. Ms. Bedell, you're up.
No, I, my question's got answered in the back and forth.
All right. Mr. Dr. Sunday, you've been waiting.
Sure. If I could maybe, my, my role is to provide counsel to the board around certain topics that impact the district. And one of the things that the board has been committed to most recently is the inclusion of voice, right, from stakeholders, whether it's community, parents, students, teachers. So I'll share with you all that. I've thought about this deeply and pretty comprehensively. And this is, the one thing that I think is very clear that we can all agree, agree on, based on our conversation over the last year and a half on this topic, and based on our experience over the last five or six years, whatever things shifted, is that this is a very complex matter, okay? When we sent out the survey, the one thing that I think is important to note that the board has to have in the back of their thinking is that we're purely collecting disposition data. And disposition data does not mean that there's any kind of validity or efficacy behind certain things. However, there is value in that piece, right? If we're sitting here, we're having a conversation about which model is effective or which model is not effective, one of the things that we must agree on as we ask these questions is hypothesis statement. If we're making the claim that there's a different model that better suits our kids, we have to be able to delineate what our hypothesis is as to how it better impact our kids. There is a host of models out there. There's a K eight model, there's a, you know, K two, there is, you know, in certain role spaces, and they all work based on, they're either effective or they're ineffective based on the work that happens in the classrooms, the work that happens at the, at the school level, and the work that happens at the systemic level. I think it's important for the board, as we go through this exploratory process, to note that whatever firm we bring in, okay, to conduct this analysis for us, it's important for us to know that they are not educational experts. Their content expertise is in something different. Based on the conversation we just had over the last hour, as we look at class sizes, there's probably about 15 different variables that impact what boundary lines look like and what class sizes look like. Chief among those, okay, as we look at this work, particularly since the board has been very, very publicly committed to equity, right? Not just equity across a host of different metrics, but equity in distribution of class sizes, equity from a racial balance standpoint, which we have different statutory regulations that mandate that, we have to go into this with deliberation and intentionality. So I just want to exercise caution that, you know, when we bring in the firm, they are not the educational experts. Don't give us expertise based on statistical analysis and data that they aggregate. It's going to be on this board to make a decision as to how this is ultimately going to benefit our kids. There's questions right now that I think we need to put some hypothesis statements on, but ultimately, as we do this internal work, we have these internal conversations, we have to start to apply principles of art. And by that, I'm talking specifically about form of function. So if we talk about boundary lines that are designed in a very specific way, a system usually does what it's designed to do, right? We talk about those things. So if we reach out to experts who do this work, whether it's in other communities, they[1745.62] they have a reputation of being stellar at this work, we have to make the determination as to whether what they suggest or recommend fits here, right? For what outcomes we envision for our community. So I say all this to say that this is going to be comprehensive and complex work. The best thing that we can do is make a commitment to get as much of the variable data information in front of us so we can make an informed and intentional and committed decision. This work's not going to happen over the next six months. This might take a year and a half if we're to do this right. So again, we'll continue to have those conversations. But I think right now, people are asking some of the right questions.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Fabian.
Yes, thank you. So my first question that I had asked previously, that I have not gotten a clear answer on, is, is it possible, based on the capacity levels in Worcester and Flood, to add sixth grade into the existing building?
So some of the surveys we showed did with with some changes to some of the schools. One of the things we did, as Dr. Sunday talked about earlier, is we recently went to Lordship School. Lordship School, we went to look at the doors. Lordship School has two or three classrooms that were.
My question's about Flood and Worcester.
I I understand, but I'm saying they have modular classrooms that have been added on. One one or two of the studies had said Worcester A would need some of those modular classrooms added, and Flood would need to have some of the classrooms redesigned. It had currently the physical capacity size-wise, but it would require re-sizing some of those classrooms to accommodate it. Turning one of the wings almost solely into a sixth grade wing. But but based on those studies that were done about 10 years ago, and the numbers were very close back then to what we have now. But according to those, it was yes. But again, that's part C or D down the road, so we don't know if we want to do that yet. And before we entered into something like that, we would need to hire, as Ms. Coopie said, we would not need to hire a professional, A, to come into looking at redrawing the lines, but B, the different variations that might be possible to to move this sixth grade, if that was the way we wanted to go, into the into the seventh and eighth grade environment.
So adding portables to Worcester would be needed?
Yeah, adding portables.
So that would then mean that the existing building, as it exists now, would not be capable without adding those.
That was one of the scenarios. They they had some other scenarios, which included, you know, turning Johnson into a middle school. There were there were three or four different scenarios that were laid out, but we don't.
Okay.
But is it possible yet? Absolutely.
With adding portables?
It depends on which scenario you took, but it would it would, yes, it would take some some change. It would take some change to make some change. So the answer to your question is yes.
So a few other. I understand, and I I absolutely agree that our, you know, soldiers on the ground, as you will, right? Or our feet on the ground, our teachers and their voice is definitely important. However, as an educator, thinking about the steps in the way that you want to go about this, right? Engaging and questioning staff, then engaging the community, then deciding if it's financially and physically capable, I think is backwards. Why are we asking our staff their opinion on if this is going to work? If this is the best way for to educate our children? While that is should be the most important focal point. As an educator, when I am given a survey and asked my opinion, and then something changes and shifts, and that survey meant nothing that I devoted my even five minutes to, it's disheartening because it tells me that my opinion doesn't really matter. So why are we asking our teachers to answer these questions, or our staff, if we don't even know if this is financially or physically possible? Like, I think we need to know the answer to that question before we ask them. Because if this is not even feasible, it makes them, well, okay, I filled out that survey for what? It doesn't matter what I think because they can't do it.
So so again, it was it was the it was unanimous vote, including your father, of all the members of the committee.
What is the point of that?
To start to start the process this way. Do we want to move the middle school up? Is it capable? Is it possible? Absolutely. It is 100% possible financially and 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 based on 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 our building space. It is 100% possible. We already know those answers, but are we going to be willing to commit to it? And we might get the survey back from the teachers, and they say, no, it it has no significant impact on the educational or the social emotional growth of the children, and and it dies there. But being that those are the people with the greatest knowledge base of what impacts our children, we wanted to start with that. And it was unanimous vote of the committee to do it that way.
May I? We're supposed to.
Yes, yes, great, excuse me.
Fabian, so to look at it a little bit differently, you know, last year, I think, was it last year? The architect did a facilities assessment across all of our schools. But now, you know, we the report, according to the report, is in bad shape, right? It needs to be basically a new school or run out a new. So a lot of work, right? The similar feedback on Flood and, you know, other schools. Now, understanding whether if, you know, six to eight, you know, model is something that benefits our children, we do need to know that, right? Like, if it's a better experience and, you know, they'll gain more from it. Knowing that, whether we can do it immediately or in the future, I think we still want to know that information so that if they're planning whatever, if they're planning to build another school, like to, you know, expand all of that, having that information can help in those future planning. That's where, how I look at it in terms of the relevancy, right? Like, we may not be able to act on it right now, but knowing that as we're planning five, 10 years out in the future, that that might be an adjustment we want to make in how, you know, in our model, that's good information to know. However, how we go about acquiring that insight, right? Is where I think we do need to have more, you know, maybe some discussion. I'm thinking to lean more professionally in doing that, wrap it into the fact that regardless of what, you know, whether we do this or not, we have to do something regarding our lines. So why not have this be a part of that and make it a professional scope?
No, and I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, totally. And I was just saying, for context, in terms of you asking the question about why we need to ask teachers that, I don't know that we need to ask them it right now.
That is my only point.
We can do it in a way that is more thought out, right? And not piecemeal, and get to that answer, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bedell's been, well, Ms. Bedell's been waiting. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Bedell.
I was just going to add, I I agree with everyone everybody's saying. I I know that we need expert reports, we need, you know, we we need to have all the information appropriately in order. But Lisa, I I have to respectfully disagree with you, and I think that our teachers are our experts.
They are.
And they know our community, and they know, like you said, they are our boots on the ground, but they know our community in a more intricate way than any expert firm that we can hire or or anything along those lines. To start with their opinion, I think, is the most valuable asset that we could ask for. Before we go and spend tens of thousands of dollars, five minutes on a survey is invaluable.
My my, I don't think anybody's arguing at all that what our teachers and staff have to say is valid and important and that they know our students. I think the the discussion is around the order that we're obtaining this information. And, you know, I think that these questions can be asked, you know, maybe still. I think they definitely should still be asked, but perhaps asked in a different forum than a five-minute survey sent out by the board, if you know what I mean, I suppose.
I I totally understand that we're we're all, and I totally agree that we're we're all on the same page. It's just not the order of where things are asked. It's just, I figured, go without the money first and ask about the money later, if it comes to that.
Yes, I mean, I don't I don't think when, if if and when there is a professional sort of assessment that that is obtained, I don't think it will be a professional assessment solely asking about the middle school model. I think the the discussion is, the money would be spent anyway as we go through the work of, you know, looking at our pathways and such. And so why not just wrap these questions up in that? And then we can take that whole package and 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 deal with that information and use that as part of our toolbox of, you know, what we do from here.
And just to be clear, there isn't a dependent relationship on the survey and whether we make a determination to work with the consultants for. There is not a dependent relationship.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So in my last point, I'm going to say on this, is what would the harm be if we asked our professional staff what their opinion is before we took the next step? This is going to take two to three years to get this done. And you're saying nothing's in a big hurry. We want to incorporate this into redrawing the lines. It's going to be a two to three-year process. You want to put it off till after the budget, which brings in the summer, which brings into next year, which brings into the election, which brings in a whole new board, which doesn't get done. Years, when when we first started this conversation, Dr. Sunday had asked me, why do you think this never has happened? And this is why it never happened, because nobody wants to take decisive action. Everybody wants to kick the can down the road. Why don't we start with the most basic question, whether or not we want to do this? And why don't we take advantage of our most valuable assets? And those are the people who work with the children. And that's all we were asking, something very simple to get the process started. And 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 we don't want to do that, and and I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. We're going to, we're going to put it off to the end of the budget. Then the summer's going to come, we're going to put it off to that. And then we're not going to be able to do it because there's an election. And then we're a year gone, and now we've got to redraw the lines, and that's going to happen. And then it's going to get kicked down the road again, and it's never going to happen. And we're never going to take a chance to ask the question, is this a better educational model for our children? And that's all we need to focus on.
Literally, nobody's saying that. We're saying we will, let's wrap all the work up together, make it a package of work. We can look at it. I'm sorry, Ms. Wiltsey.
Yeah, so I I think hearing the back and forth and the the ideology behind all of it, is this a better working model? You asked that of the teachers, that can be one question. It doesn't have to be an entire survey. What I do think is happening already, because this is the second month of the back and forth, is it's already stirring havoc in the community. People are already talking about it. Teachers are already asking if this is going to happen. They're already imagining, if the board's talking about wanting to know if the sixth grade and middle school is a model, what does that mean for this elementary school? When is that going to happen? The way that the process works, I think, is the most important part of the process because if we are saying, what do you think? And they come back, the majority, and there's discussion throughout the community about what majority actually means. So let's say 51% of our professional staff say yes. Do we move forward with 51% when 49 strongly disagree? I mean, there's going to be conversations around around that as well. So I think the thing we have to think most about is the steps in this. And so I thank you, Ms. Carol Fabian, for bringing up what the steps are because unless we have some serious intention on moving forward, we can't ignore the 49% who disagree. So it's not going to be 100% of our professional staff saying, yes, as we agree, this is the model. We have to be prepared for the other half that don't. And it could come to that. So I think the committee needs to think a little bit longer and harder in their next meeting as to how you're going to proceed bringing it to the board as as to what that first step is.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to clear, hi, because it seems that some have misunderstood my position on this. I am not against doing what is best for the students of this district or the staff of this district. My main concern is I do trust our teachers and their professional opinion. However, to ask questions before we even know if it is feasible is my concern. If we know that this is feasible financially, physically, with the capacity, then go proceed. I have no objection to that. But to ask a question when we don't even know if that is possible is my concern. That is.
Noted. Well, what a great conversation, guys. Thank you so much, and thank you for plant and planning, to plant and planning for all of your work on this thus far. Moving on to tabled items, is there anything anybody would like to take off the table? Okay, we'll move on to our committee assignments and reports, curriculum. Ms. Carol Fabian, you guys met on December 13th?
We did. So during the December meeting of curriculum, there was a proposal to begin working on a Spanish Spanish heritage course that can be added to our world language curriculum for the 25, 26 school year. This is being proposed to help meet the needs of those students in our dual-language program as they progress through the grades. So currently, our first class of dual-language students are now in fifth grade. So this is looking forward to them progressing into middle school and high school and the needs of them, you know, being above entering like a Spanish one. So expanding that program. And it also would give opportunity to our bilingual students so that way they are not beginning in a level that is beyond their need, below their needs. We also received an update on kindergarten purposeful play. PD was given to kindergarten teachers as well as administrators throughout the district. We've been lucky that Karen Gray, who has received a Lego grant fund, has been able to cover the costs of her coaching through this grant. So she will be with us at various moments, times throughout the year. Purposeful play helps provide students with many needed skills, some of those such as emotional learning, emotional needs, and executive functioning needs. And her, the presentation done by Sam Rosenberg and others was presented, was sent to the entire board through Ms. Lakoudis. Then we also received a presentation from Dr. Diorio. She gave an update on the science of reading and the cohorts work that the district is participating in throughout the state. They continue to focus on the key components of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and listening. This presentation was also sent to the entire board to keep you all up to date on what is happening in reading as we look toward the Right to Read Bill and the effects of that in K to three. And that is all we have.
All right. Ms. Coopie, anything to add?
No.
Mr. Kennedy, anything to add? Any questions for our curriculum committee? Okay, thank you so much.
No problem.
Finance Committee, we just met. Mrs. Wiltsey, will you give a recap, please?
We sure did. We met before tonight's meeting. There were no budget transfers. We got great updates from Dr. Clemmie about grants, Ms. Borges about our special education budget line item, and Ms. Mangini about food services and registration and enrollment. I am asking everyone to save the date of our budget workshops. They will be February 6th, February 8th, February 15th, February 22nd, and February 27th, 6:30 p.m. Please, please, please be a part of this process and see how we move forward for next year. And our next finance committee meeting will be January 23rd, 6:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you so much.
I think we received those dates, but can you just email them back out to us just so we have?
Sure, yeah.
Good idea.
I tried to write as fast as you were talking. I couldn't keep up.
Excellent. Any questions, any other questions for our finance chair? All right, thank you. School plant and planning committee, do you guys have anything further to tell us about your meeting on December 1st, Mr. Hunter? No, sir?
Just a quick update, we did receive some questions slash feedback about Worcester. So I, Mr. Rogerio was at our last meeting. He mentioned that in regards to the bleachers not being out, those have to be requested to be put out for an event. They don't stay out all the time, you know, we don't want them to be beat up. The restrooms all have soap dispensers, he confirmed. There are plans to update the locker rooms in the future. If I'm misspeaking? It's happening right now, okay, good, yeah. And they are pricing out drop ceilings for the locker rooms, correct? Okay, great, so all those questions are answered.
And the lights on the billboard were fixed?
Yes, there too.
Scoreboard?
Yes, that one as well. Thank you.
Good stuff, thank you.
So and and they brought it up, and I think you're, when we were at Lordship School, there was some early wear to the to the new gym floor?
It's already been noted, it's running today.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any questions for our plant and planning committee? Super, okay. Liaison did not meet in December. Policy review, you guys met December 12th, Ms. Bedell, Ms. Coopie? Anything to report?
We did. We are currently in the process of developing policy, a line item transfer policy, which we've talked about in finance committee, and a food service charging policy. So I know things are changing at the beginning of next month, but we wanted to be thoughtful in what we put forth to the board.
Yeah, you bet, that's great, thank you. Ms. Bedell? She gave a thumbs up. And athletic review, you guys are meeting next month? Excellent. Excellent, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, other committees, Ms. Coopie, do you have a CAE update for us?
Yes, I'm actually in the process of planning our area legislative breakfast, uh, for January, so we're gonna have it here in Stratford. So more details on that. Um, and then lastly, just something that we talk about a lot, um, at CAE is student voice. And so, you know, while I do love hearing our student representatives for the high school come up and share, you know, their updates, I would love for us to find a way to incorporate them more into the work that we do. We went to the conference, um, that was in November, we heard from other district students, um, and what they want. They want to be involved in the work. So whether it's, you know, maybe we have different ad hoc committees that we have where we can bring them in and, you know, um, or bring them into our, some of our existing committees where, um, I feel like they would learn a lot, but also for us, it would be super valuable to get their input. So whatever we can do to help move that forward beyond just, you know, showing up at these meetings and giving the update, I think that would be great for us. So that's my update.
Something to chew on, thank you.
I'm proud to say that some of those students you saw at the conference were some of my first.
I know, I know, I know.
So exciting.
Very impressive.
I know.
Very impressive, yes.
There's multiple things that we did in terms of the voice with the board so we could, um, have a process about how we can incorporate that.
So with that, it should be a nice easy implementation, right?
Amazing. Super. Uh, CES did not meet this month. They will be meeting, uh, in January. And Building Needs, Stratford High, is that? I ask you guys this every month. Is it, is it, so have they closed out?
It should be, will close out. I'll check the minutes, but there really isn't any update right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can, can I just ask though, um, if the committee is closed out, is there any bit of an update regarding?
There should be something come to the, oh.
We heard tonight about all the issues at, happening at Stratford High. Um, is, is there an update that the committee can provide the board?
All right, so, so we were asked not to, to, to limit our discussions, 'cause there's some potential litigation that might be coming around it. But I would guess that they're working through the prop, the channels to get it resolved. But I guess Mr. Rogerio could probably answer it offline for you.
Yes, we can certainly connect offline. Um, we recognize it's a frustration point for our friends at Stratford High. We, um, wish we had a better immediate response for you. Um, the big challenge for a lot of us right now is determining the root cause and we know those temporary fixes, those Band-Aid responses is not solving the problem. Um, so we apologize and we understand it's a frustration point, but do know, um, that the Board of Education, my office and the town, we're all working incredibly hard on this. And as soon as we have, uh, identified the root cause, we'll make sure it's a fix. Okay, hang in there.
One last thing for that committee. Um, I don't know that this is a part of the litigation, but is the kitchen up and running yet? 'Cause that has been a very loud outcry online. Up and running? Thank you so much.
It's up and running and, uh, you know what, Jack, in a different life, you're gonna be able to design your own school, right?
I heard they hired the principal to start cooking.
Okay, um, let me remind everybody that tomorrow, Tuesday, December 20th, is an early dismissal day for teacher PLC. I always need that reminder, so just in case anybody else does too. Um, and before we adjourn, does anybody have anything else?
Friday, is that early?
There we go. Friday's also an early dismissal, but that one is more expected as we enter the holiday break. So, uh, anything else from anybody?
Safe.
Yes, so before I adjourn, let me wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. Stay healthy, stay safe and we'll see you in January. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:52.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Carol Fabian, Secretary of Transit's Wiltsey, all in favor? Happy holidays.